Can we have a roll call by someone? Who, is that still Kathleen? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Blanco?
Here.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mohajer?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez is absent. Chair Seifert.
Here, thank you. Do we have someone for a motion for the minutes of the last meeting?
I'll go ahead and move that we approve the minutes for the meeting, meeting minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. At this time, we're going to be having a public comment period. And I'm going to switch with Kathleen on Zoom, see if we have anyone that wants to talk. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to the discussion of three minutes, or as otherwise directed by the chair.
If you're participating via Zoom and wish to make a public comment, please use the raised hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you're using a phone, press star nine on your telephone keypad, then press star eight, I cannot read this, to unmute your phone. When it's your time to speak, you'll be requested to unmute your microphone and speak for the time allotted by the chair. Your microphone will be muted upon completion of your comments. Unless otherwise directed by the chair, speakers will have three minutes to comment. And we have nobody's hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you, Kathleen, I don't have any slips, I don't believe there's anyone in the audience. So we are going to move on. At this time, we're going to go into the public hearings, and we're going to go to number 5A, Blosser Ranch Multi-Family Residential Plan Development Permit, permits at the northeast corner of Blosser Road and Battles Road. We have a staff presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Carol Ziesenhenny, and can everybody hear me okay? Okay, thanks. This is the presentation for the last two remaining multifamily lots on the Blosser Southeast Area 5B specific plan. The Planning Commission reviewed the projects at the study sessions on August 17th, 2023, and on October 5th, 2023. The projects are within the Blosser Southeast Specific Plan Area 5B, which is bounded by Stole Road, Battles Road, Blosser Road, and Depot Street. Across the, across Depot Street and the Santa Maria Valley Railroad is Manami Park. To the north is Sanchez School. Blosser Road, Lineage Logistics, and Liberty School are to the west of the project. So this slide depicts the zoning of the site. The area outlined in red is the area for the proposed projects. So this is on the, on the top in the orange. It's about fourteen point, sorry, eighteen point four acres. The remainder of the Blosser Southeast Area 5B project is also comprised of other multifamily residential, high-density residential, single-family residential in the yellow, a sports complex in the dark green, and a junior high outlined in the light green. A fire station is proposed in the bottom part of this pink area, and neighborhood commercial is also proposed in the pink, or would be reviewed by Planning Commission when a future application is received by the city. So the applicant is proposing development only in the residential zones of the property outlined in red. So this is for lots two and three, for residential apartments of the Blosser Ranch project site. Lot two is on the left, on the south side of Stole Road and the west side of Western Avenue. Lot three is on the eastern side of Western Avenue, and is directly adjacent to the open space. On the right-hand side is a rendering depiction of the full build-out of the Blosser Ranch project area. And so the, there are two other projects that went to study session, at the last study session, which are the single-family projects. Those are planned for future hearing dates. They went to subdivision committee last week, and will be before your hearing, before your commission shortly. So we'll begin with the staff presentation for lot two. Lot two is proposed on a 10.3 gross acre project site on the southwest corner of Stole Road and Western Avenue in the intersection. Two hundred eighty-two units are proposed of those, sixteen are affordable units. And this is the site plan. Primary access is proposed off of Western. Right turn exit only onto Stole Road. There's a condition of approval to expand this median on Stole Road to preclude any illegal left-hand turns. This will create a physical barrier to prevent any illegal movements. The project is comprised of three residential buildings and a community center. So Building E is the largest building. It has fifty-seven units. Building G is on the right-hand side here, facing Stole Road and Western in the corner. Proposes eighty-three units. And Building F, which is the smallest, proposes fifty-seven. I might have misspoken, actually Building E proposes one hundred and forty-two units. Parking is provided at a rate of one space for the studios and one bedroom, and two spaces for the two- and three-bedroom units. Half of those spaces are proposed to be covered by solar carports, which is consistent with city code requiring half of the parking spaces be covered. This is an affordable housing project, which qualifies for a 25% density bonus request. This is permitted under state codes and city zoning code 1248, section 1248. The applicant will enter into a binding agreement with the city for all proposed sixteen affordable units, to be income-restricted for a duration of fifty-five years. I would like to mention that the staff report references a regulatory agreement with the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee. However, this applicant is not seeking tax credits. Therefore, that binding agreement would not apply to this project, and would be, not be enforced for either of these projects for either lots two or three. It would just be an agreement with the city for the deed restriction. Under state density bonus law, the project qualifies for one concession, a waiver, and parking that is under the state requirements for density bonus, rather than the city's municipal code requirements. The requested concessions to allow an increase in the building height from thirty-five feet, which is the maximum allowed in the R3 zone, increases the height to forty-three feet. So this height increase would allow for taller ceilings, ten-foot-tall ceilings, which increases the quality of life for the residents, and also allows for a more varied roof line. The average roof height would be forty feet, with several roof or chimney elements up to forty-three feet in height. With this density bonus application, the applicant is also requesting a 2% reduction in the landscaping requirement, from the 20% down to 18%, and has requested that, that parking ratio under state housing density bonus law, rather than the city's standard. So usually, a development project must be modified and/or reduced to comply with established objective design standards and other development regulations such as limits on building height, setback, parking, and onsite open space requirements. Concessions and incentives, as defined under state law, allow a developer to deviate from those design regulations, standards and development regulations, when those regulations potentially make the project infeasible economically for the developer to build. So any, any options to deny incentives are to find on the basis of significant and quantifiable documented evidence that the incentive would be contrary to state or federal law, or would have a specific adverse and unavoidable impact, impact on public health, safety, or on a listed historic property. So lot two is proposed to be a craftsman-style architectural design with a combination of hardy plank lap siding, shingle siding, and vertical board and batten accents. There are also, as a result of discussion with Planning Commission at the study session, stucco siding as well, to reduce the, the bulk and appearance of that stone, stone cladding. As, it's visible here in this depiction, but in future slides, it'll show the modification as requested by the commission. Decorative chimneys, flower boxes, and wood railings on the balconies will add interest throughout the project. And the stone accents are to be used strategically to ground the building only. As I mentioned previously, stone accents have been adjusted based on the feedback. So this is the community building. It's approximately 8,000 square feet, and provides a robust package of indoor and outdoor resident amenities that the applicant will discuss in their presentation. This is a view of Building E's south elevation. This shows the entire length of the south elevation for the largest building. The match line is on the left-hand side here, below and above. So this shows where these building, the entire building will be a full line. Carports are proposed under the second-floor units. This is the north elevation, showing the two courtyards. In the center is the, the building, this is the W shape, or E, E-building. These plans reflect the exterior finish changes recommended at the October 5th Planning Commission. In future slides, I'll show the difference. This is where the stone cladding was proposed, and it has been changed by the applicant to stucco. This is a view of the floor plans for Bill, for the west half of Building E. In total, forty units are proposed on the first floor. There are mostly one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. The unit sizes vary, but they're around 700 square feet for the one-bedroom, and 1,000 square feet for the two bedrooms. The arrows show entry points into this wing. So these red arrows show the stairwells leading up to the, this western wing. There is another set of stairwells, two more, on the eastern side of the building as well. This is just a portion, a sample to show the commission. Moving up, this is the second floor. Fifty-two units are proposed on the entire second floor. The continuation of the stairwells and the interior hallways are shown in these sections here. Fifty units are proposed on the third floor. There is a, an opening here, this is only a second floor, there's just a, a roof line there, there's no unit. However, there is a pedestrian bridge to connect these two portions of the building. So this, this is the depiction of the Building G east elevations, showing the previous and revised elevations, as requested by the Planning Commission. So the applicant has revised the plan to reduce the stone cladding on some walls, revise the middle railing and the courtyard to be more lacy and transparent. On the top screen is the elevation showed at the October study session, and at the bottom is the revised plans proposed this evening. This is the view visible from western. And then, on the reverse side, this is the courtyard elevation, which is directly opposite, which is be seen from the west, on the west side. The applicant is providing open space amenities, which exceed the city's minimum requirement of 250 square feet per unit. Each unit instead gets nearly 300 square feet via a variety of common and private open areas. This is the planting plan. The applicant has coordinated with city staff regarding drought-tolerant species compatible with the local climate. The city arborist has reviewed this plan. This is the planting pallet, which is composed of low-water-using plants. This is a sample of those variety of species to be used. There's a couple more pages, this is just a sample. And so this concludes my presentation for lot two. And without further ado, I'll move into the presentation for lot three.
Chair, Chair Seifert? I was gonna ask if you and the commissioners might want to see if there's any questions specifically?
I just did a little check, we're good.
Okay, so moved to lot three?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. So this is the lot three proposal, which is located on, on the, to the, to the east of the property, highlighted in red again, so we're just moving to the right. Close, this is closer to the junior high, middle school. The middle school is located just to the south. The lot is 8.9 gross acres. So this property proposes, or this project proposes 242 units, with fourteen affordable units, within four buildings, plus the community center. So Buildings H and K, which bookend the project, these U-shaped buildings propose eighty-two and eighty-six units respectively. And the smaller buildings I and J provide thirty-nine and thirty-three units respectively. This is a taller proposal with the farmhouse-style architecture. I'll, I'll get into that in future slides. Just as a refresher, this is also a density bonus project. The applicant is proposing 7% of the units to be affordable, which would have a deed-restricted density bonus agreement for fifty-five years for the fourteen units provided, which results in a 25% density bonus of forty-nine units, up to 245 possible units. But the applicant is proposing 242 apartment units, so they're three below what the state law allows. And similar to lot two, the applicant is requesting a concession for height increase, up to fifty feet in height, to accommodate the steep farmhouse-style roof and chimney elements and projections. A requested waiver to reduce the landscaping requirement from 20% to 15.23%, five, it's a 5% reduction. And then, the parking according to state density bonus law requirements. The applicant is exceeding that requirement for the state law by providing 411 parking spaces at that similar ratio with the one unit per studios and one bedrooms, and two units, or two parking spaces for two and three bedroom units. These are the proposed colors and materials for lot three. Lot three proposes a modern farmhouse style with a steep, classic standing seam metal roofing, and vertical cementitious siding and stucco. It's intended to mimic the board and batten siding with a more durable material than wood. Accent base, wall base is stone and some tile, and metal accents throughout, which is consistent with the farmhouse architecture. This is an elevation of the community building, where the steep standing seam roof signature is evident. The maximum roof height of the tower itself is nearly forty-two feet. Similar to lot two, there are an extensive amenity package that the applicant has available in their presentation. So this is a, a sample showing one of the smaller units, Building I, with the first floor plan. It's showing the surrounding with the central hallway, several entryways, or three main entryways into the building, and two stairwells. There are thirteen units on this floor. There are actually thirteen units on each floor, it's, it's consistent all the way up. So this is building, the two, second and third floor plan for Building I. These are the building elevations. Again, with the classic farmhouse-style architecture, chimney features on either end of the building, the entryways on either side, and in the center on this other, on the north elevation. So this north elevation is what would be seen from Stole Road. This is a view of another, the other building type, which is the, the U-shaped building. This is simply to show what the other Building G on lot two would have as well in terms of floor plan. So there's three main entry wells, three stairwells, and then hallway entries as well. Twenty units are proposed for the Building H floor plan, and each unit is furnished with, with a private open space via patio. On the second and third floors, each unit will have a balcony. So this second floor plan shows thirty-two units. And then this is the third floor with thirty units. And noting again, there's this catwalk pedestrian bridge with an empty space in the center. It's two stories. So these are the typical elevations for those U-shaped buildings. You'll notice that there's a section here, this is showing the building basically split like a cake, showing the insides of the building. Similar architecture, chimney accents throughout, very tall, steep roof with the standing seam, board and batten, and stone. This is showing the courtyard view and the parking areas, where there's carports underneath the second floor. This is showing a, on the left-hand side is showing a zoomed-in version closer to the end of the building, and the interior of the courtyard. This is a courtyard perspective that was presented at the study session as well, for a realistic 3D rendering. The applicant is similar to the other projects, is proposing a robust amenity package. This project exceeds the open space requirement required by the city, which compensates for the reduction in the landscaping. This is a, a sample showing the clubhouse with a pool, splash pad, chaise longues, play area, and then portions of the clubhouse floor plan. Shade trees and sunny areas are, are provided throughout. This is the landscape and tree planting plan. Again, staff has worked closely with the applicant on providing the appropriate species of trees, and ensuring that the locations are sufficient for large tree growth and shading at maturity. Here's another sample of the landscape pallet with low water use, drought-tolerant species, lots of native species as well, Californian natives. This project was adequately covered in a previously adopted final supplemental environmental impact report according to California Environmental Quality Act State Guidelines, section 15162, and no further environmental review is required. This concludes my presentation. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions. First, by motion, approve Plan Development Permit PD 2023-0006 as referenced in the staff memorandum dated October 17th, 2023. And secondly, by motion, approve Plan Development Permit PD 2023-0011 as referenced in the staff memorandum dated October 17th, 2023. Thank you, and the applicant is here with a presentation as well.
Thank you very much, do we, do we have any expertise? Have I spoken? No.
Yeah, I think I actually had a couple of meetings with the applicant. It's been a few weeks back, but, ahead of the study sessions even, so ahead of this meeting as well.
I, I did as well, same type of thing, quite a while back. Let's move on to the, do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Blanco?
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, just a couple of questions on lot three. Lot two was mentioned to have ten-foot ceilings, is that also the case for lot three?
Commissioner Blanco, yes.
Okay. And then, all, just to be clear, all units, lot two and three are one-story units, is that right? They're all one-story units, right?
Correct, yes, single level.
That's it, thank you.
Mohajer?
Thank you, Chair. Question for staff, the adjacent parcel is the school, correct?
Correct.
So the perimeter wall from lot three, there is no access points there?
That's correct, it's, for school security, it would be a, a continuous wall.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that, thank you.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Do we have, do we have a picture of what, you, you showed the, the current way that that interior section on EG and HK are looking? Do we have something that rules it all the way back to, as it was originally shown to us?
So there's the third floor with the third floor unit.
Yeah.
Staff does have that, that was reviewed prior to the study session, so I can pull that up if...
Yeah, can I, can we take a look at that just?
May I ask which lot that is? Is that lot two or three we're talking about?
Both.
Oh, on both.
So I'll begin by pulling up the, the prior staff presentation from the study session in August. This is for lot two.
And this one, and the peak is basically where the modification has been made, and below?
Correct, so the top of the roof was reduced to be a second floor only, so there'd be one unit here. And then, this entire area was basically carved out to reduce that massing.
Okay. And it more or less looks the same for, for all four of the, okay.
That's correct.
Alright, thank you.
Along the same lines, did we change the stairwells too? The look of the stairwells was that noted? I think we had some discussions about that too, just to show the differences.
For, excuse me, for the, the original, from the study session, or from, uh, the first study session, or from the...
I believe we changed it from the first study session.
Yes.
Just so we can see what we did.
So there's this isometric view. I'll see if I can find a better picture, I can probably pull it up from the plan set. So this is showing the other side that we'd previously been looking at, the carport side. This is in the interior of the courtyard area. The stairwell, which was previously exposed, it was, it was opened up to create a breezeway between the two study sessions in August and October. So this shows an interior entryway into the building, there would be no breezeway. So this is showing the doors, and then the stairs would lead up onto, from the second floor onto the third floor. So this, I believe the second floor stairwell is enclosed. No? It, it's an exterior stairwell. Looks like it's right here, leading up. I can probably pull up the floor plan if the commission wishes.
I think we just need to see what we changed it to.
So that's the first floor plan. So as a comparison, I'll pull back up the... So this is the change. Oh, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else? Can we have an applicant presentation? Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Sam Alcuni, Canfield Development. And my address is the site. Good evening, members of the planning commission. Thank you for your time. A lot of this we ran through in the last couple sessions, so I'll try to run through it as quickly as possible. Additionally, Carol did a great job explaining most of it, so I'll try to focus on some of the stuff that wasn't presented by staff. And first and foremost, thank you to city staff for being, you know, allowing us to bring this presentation forward and this project forward. It's been an absolute pleasure working with the city staff to present a project that's beneficial for the residents and that really has a, has a good quality, you know, residential experience. So Blossom Ranch Lot Two, it's located in Area 5B. It's highlighted on the screen on the top in yellow. This is just some of the additional infrastructure, the second phase of our infrastructure that would go in together with this development, which includes the buildout of La Brea East, the buildout of Western North, extension of all the utilities and entrances to the project. There'll be additional widening along Stoll Avenue, upgrade to some of the train tracks along Stoll and Depot, and new traffic signals throughout. Just to remind the commission, the part of this development includes the Nineteen Acre Sports Complex. Canfield assigned an MOU together with the city to essentially give the lot six, which is our sports complex lot two, in exchange for the full credit of Quimby fees, which achieves a no out-of-pocket cost to the city for the land. Additionally, there's a two-acre new fire station, which wasn't included initially as a part of the specific plan. But the, you know, the Santa Maria Fire Department requested that this was, that there was a major need for that. So we, we took two acres out of the, the commercial parcel, which was the exact location that was requested. And again, this was in exchange for fire fees associated with the development, again achieving no out-of-pocket cost to the city for, for that land. And then there's also a twenty-three acre new school, which we're in talks with the, the school district to, to, to present that project shortly. The school district would essentially bring that project before the commission. This just gives you an idea of where the access points to the project are. So off of Stoll Road on the southern side of the project, there's the main entry, the only entry for vehicles, and an exit with pedestrian access. There's an additional exit only. And as Carol mentioned, there's a right turn only out of that exit off of Stoll Road. One of the conditions of the project is to extend the median, the median on Stoll Road to, you know, not allow for potential illegal left turn, turns out of that exit. Additionally, there's a, there's two other access, pedestrian access points. One at the corner of Western and Stoll, and then one at the, the northwest corner of the project, giving residents, giving pedestrian access to the local amenities and also to public transport. Just a quick project overview, it's the second multifamily development for Blossom Ranch Area 5B, a total of two hundred and eighty-two units, a mix of studios, one, two, and three-bedroom units. Just a refresher, seven percent or six units, sixteen units set aside for very low-income families. This is a craftsman-style architecture, which is consistent with one of the architectural styles presented within a specific plan. And again, this is, this community has complimentary green spaces, which we'll go over in just a moment. It's fifty percent covered parking and a green community providing solar EV charging, which we'll get into as, as well as a reduced greenhouse gas emission. This is just the breakdown of the unit mix. So again, seven, seven percent affordable, sixteen units set aside, and, and those sixteen units are in proportion to the unit quantities by unit type. So there's a total of eighteen studios, a hundred and one one-bedroom, one-bathroom units, a hundred and fourteen two-bedroom and two-bathroom units, and forty-nine three-bedroom and two-and-a-half bathroom units, for a total of two hundred and eighty-two units. This is a rendering of the clubhouse, and, you know, I'll go through some of the amenities that are included here. There's a lounge and a family area, a children's study room, a game room, a private dining room, chef's kitchen, fitness center with showers. There's a business center. There's some short-term bike parking. This is also where the leasing and management office will be located with some additional package delivery, with an additional package delivery center. Something that's not included in this list is also our bike repair station will be located at the clubhouse as well. And that, the rendering that you see on the screen is a, is a true-life rendering of what the clubhouse would look like. Just to note, we modified. There used to be one large window above the entry. We split it per the commission to, per the comments from, comments from one of the commissions to two vertical windows in lieu. This is some of the exterior amenities that are located around the community center. There's a pool, a spa, splash pad, covered chaise lounge area. There's a Baja shelf. There's a barbecue dining area located at the back behind the spa. There's also an outdoor fitness center for some people that might want to, you know, work out instead of in the, in the enclosed fitness center. They'll work out, you know, at the exterior fitness center. Again, many areas for seating and lounging. There's a fire pit and couch area, as well as Adirondack chairs and just framed in with some really complimentary landscaping. As you go away from the clubhouse, it'll lead you to kind of the center of our project, where you'll find a playground for children, additional barbecue areas, and additional shaded seating, unshaded seating. Again, framed in with complimentary landscaping. There'll be some Santa Maria barbecues located in this space as well. We're including a community chalkboard for this, for this specific community, which we thought was a, you know, a nice addition for this community. And if you further along, as you get into between the buildings, there are many different little green and pocket spaces. This is just highlighting some of them. There's some outdoor gaming areas with outdoor ping pong. There's a, there's, you know, more zen lounge spaces with, that have mounded turf. And some of these photos that you see on the screen are some of the inspiration photos we're taking to, as we go further into the design of the project. There's also a water feature located, it's listed as number ten right at the center in between these courtyards. There's also a pet run located at the entry of the project. And included in that pet run is, you know, just little amenities for, you know, a pet wash and some other little features for pets. Again, some additional pocket areas that we have located throughout the project. You can see on the, on the screen some additional inspiration photos. Again, covered outdoor dining areas with additional barbecue areas. When you have a project or a community of this size, you'll end up with, with multiple different residents wanting to have maybe separate gatherings in separate areas. So it was very important to us to create many different little pockets where many different families can hang out. At one of our study sessions, it was brought up the, the issue of the, how, how close the buildings were. So this was just a slide that, you know, showing just what the actual dimensions are in our smallest area at the front end of the courtyard. The, the space between the buildings is about forty-five feet. And as you go through the courtyard, most of the courtyard is an average of sixty-five feet. It can get as small as fifty-five feet and get as wide as ninety feet in one area, but primarily sixty-five feet in between these buildings. And that's consistent between all the different courtyards that we have on lot two and on lot three. This just gives a, in, you know, a, a real-life scale of what, you know, sixty-five feet or seventy feet would feel like in between those courtyards. So in the center of the screen is a section taken out of the Blossom Ranch specific plan showing that from back of walk to back of walk, which includes, you know, two eight-foot sidewalks, two ten-foot landscape areas, two six-foot bike lanes, and two twelve-foot driving lanes is, is, you know, kind of what it would feel like standing in between our buildings. And on the sides, you can see different arterial roads and local streets. On the left-hand side is a local street from property line to property line, which is sixty feet. That's Capitola, which is just south of our project. And just west of our project on Blossom Road is seventy feet from one side of the road to the other, kind of giving you that, that scale of what it would feel like. So this is a revised rendering of what it would feel like inside our courtyard. It's revised only because we made a few changes, which I'll just note on the next slide. So we had a, a third story at the end of the courtyard that's been reduced to two stories. The balconies at the end of the courtyard were angled in so that they can face some of the green spaces and amenities. We also changed full-height stone back to stucco, which was a comment at the last session that we had. And then additionally, the railing, which was brought up at the last session as well, on the stairwells was changed to reflect a more, a more, a railing that's more design-friendly and more consistent with the architecture. So what you'll see is vertical black pickets that were changed from white picket railing that's, that you'll see on the balconies. So this, let's talk about community parking for a moment. This is a rendering of what that entry gate would look like coming into our community. There's a total of four hundred and eighty-seven parking spaces. Per California Government Code, Section six five nine one five, only three hundred and sixty-four spaces are required. We're providing four hundred and eighty-seven spaces, well beyond what the state density bonus law requires. In order to maximize the parking, tandem parking spaces were provided. Again, just to clarify, these two spaces would, would be rented out to the same unit to create a more efficient parking, to, to manage the parking a little better. Something we mentioned in the beginning of the presentation is that we'll, we'll be providing EV charging stations. We'll be providing it one per unit, which is well above the code requirement. Additionally, these EV charging stations will not just be, we won't just be running, you know, conduit to these for future EV charging. We'll actually be installing one EV charger per unit. Consistent with code, fifty percent of the parking is covered with solar carports. And again, it's a professionally managed community that will enforce the parking rules. This is the community entryway, just showing a very far-fetched scenario of what it would look like if there was a pileup. The entry gate was moved into the project forty-five feet from the back of the sidewalk in lieu of the twenty-five-foot requirement, just to allow for, you know, hopefully this would never happen, but for allow, to allow that if there was a, a traffic jam of some sort, that there would be, there would be some access for cars to have that turnaround. You'll see that center median in between the gates. There'll also be a call box for guests and vendors to be able to contact the resident or the management trying to get into the community. There's also, you know, the residents will enter the project using an automated system, which reads a sticker that's located on their license plate. So for landscape design, there were ninety-nine parking lot trees provided in lieu of the eighty-one required to maximize our, our greenery. As Carol mentioned, the, the landscaping was stylistically coordinated to maintain native, landscaping that's native to Santa Maria. And we worked with the city arborists and city staff to, you know, have landscaping that's consistent with Santa Maria and that would be aesthetically pleasing for this architecture. So this is a, a real-life rendering of what the craftsman-style architecture would look like. We were not able to get this modified in time to remove that stone, so I apologize. The, the full-height stone wall on the right-hand side of the screen has been modified on our plan sets though to change that to stucco per the, the comments from the commission. Part of the craftsman-style architecture includes symmetrical shingle siding, lap siding, batten board siding, stone cladding, and stucco with five materials and five different colors, consistent with craftsman-style architecture. The roof would be with asphalt shingles, wood-painted rafters and beams, balcony stucco and stone wall features with complimentary decorative lighting, window awnings. And the windows and sliding doors, balcony doors would be black-framed windows. And there's a white window frame accent on the exterior of some of the elevations of our, of this community. And this is a view looking from Stoll and Western Avenue. There's that perimeter, perimeter property line wall, which is, which has an additional strip of landscaping on the outside of our property line. And this is that view, and that view is pretty similar from Western and Stoll Avenue. So this is a density bonus project, and so we're allowed one incentive and a waiver. So we're asking for the allowable height ordinance to be, to be, for a modification of the allowable height. The zoning ordinance allows for thirty-five feet, and we're asking for an average of forty feet throughout the project. I will mention that that third floor or third-story feature that was removed at the ends of those courtyards, that was like the highest point of any roof feature. So it kind of changed from that initial application. It went from being an average of forty feet to now an average of thirty-six feet, with some areas extending all the way up to forty-three feet on some of these chimney details and some of the, the tall areas of the pitched roof. Density bonus parking law, again, this is just a breakdown of our parking spaces. Again, the density bonus law only requires three hundred and sixty-four spaces. We're providing a hundred and twenty-three spaces well beyond that. And it's a breakdown of standard tandem and accessible parking spaces. Again, fifty percent of those spaces are covered, fifty percent of those spaces being uncovered. Our last waiver is in regards to the landscaping requirement. There's a two percent reduction in the twenty percent landscape requirement. The city requirement for open spaces, two hundred and fifty square feet of open space per unit. We're providing close to three hundred square feet of open space per unit. So again, we just felt for, you know, we wanted to be able to reduce the landscaping for two reasons. Number one, to make the spaces more usable for the residents, to allow for additional pocket areas that are actually usable in lieu of having just covered a landscaped area. It's also better for maintenance and long-term drought tolerance as California heads, you know, to the future with a more drought-tolerant landscape. And this is just a list of some of the changes from our initial application going through, going through the application process with city staff and with the study session. So our original project was two hundred and eighty-seven units. We removed some units to stay consistent and per the comments from city staff and the planning commission. So we're down to two hundred and eighty-two units. You know, the, the parking requirement, again, three hundred and sixty-four, we're providing four hundred and eighty-seven. The building design at the end of the courtyard and some of the other building design changes we've spoken about, such as the stone walls, the railing design, and, you know, window above the clubhouse. Pedestrian, pedestrian access points, per city staff, we added that additional third access point to allow easy access to public transport. Children's study room was added per this planning commission. The sidewalk sizes were changed on our initial project. They were all four feet. We, in order to stay consistent, we've changed it to five-foot sidewalks throughout all of the phases of Blossom Ranch. And then parking lot trees, again, eighty-one are required per code. We're providing ninety-nine of them. And that concludes my presentation for lot two. Do we want to do questions now, or we want to go through lot three?
We're going away.
So we'll go to lot three?
Please continue. Thank you.
So the first couple slides of lot three are kind of the same, so instead of being a broken telephone, I'll just skip straight to the community-specific slides. Sorry. Okay, so this is a depiction of the floor plan of the community. As Carol mentioned, there are four residential buildings, with the fifth building being the clubhouse. There is that main entry and exit point off of Stoll Road. There is an additional exit only, right turn only, off of Stoll Road as well. Sorry, let me backtrack. There's a, the main entry and the main exit is off of Western Avenue, and the exit only is off of Stoll Road with three total pedestrian access points, as shown on the screen. One at the main entry, one at the, the southwestern corner of the project, and one closer to the, the, sorry, the northwestern corner of the project, and one on the northern side of the project closer to the exit. Lot three is the third and final multifamily development for Blossom Ranch Area 5B, a total of two hundred and forty-two units, a mix of studios, ones, twos, and three-bedroom units. Seven percent or fourteen units set aside for very low-income housing. I will just point out that these are fifty-five-year deed-restricted units. These are the, you know, units that are built to the same standard as all the other units, and, you know, the same finishes and same standard as, as what you'll find in the rest of the community. Again, professionally managed, private gated community. And it's a community that will include state-of-the-art amenities, which we'll go through in a moment, and staying consistent with the complimentary green spaces, easy access to public transport, fifty percent covered parking, and, and this is a green community. This architecture is the farmhouse-style architecture, and we have some renderings to show you shortly. This is a unit mix of the two hundred and forty-two units. So studios, twenty-six studios, seventy-two one-bedroom, one-bathroom units, ninety-six two-bedroom, two-bathroom units, and forty-eight three-bedroom and two-and-a-half bathroom units. This is a rendering of our clubhouse, which is again in that farmhouse-style architecture and consistent with all of our communities, includes a lounge, family area, children's study room, game room, private dining, chef's kitchen, a fitness center with showers, business center, bike parking. There's a bike repair station at this clubhouse as well. The leasing and management office is located in this building, as well as the package delivery center, one of the many package delivery centers located around the community. This is a rendering or a... This is a rendering or a depiction of what it would look like around the community building. So you can see it includes a pool, spa, splash pad, staying consistent with all of our amenity packages that we've shown to date, with a kids' play park, baja shelf, chaise lounges, Adirondack chairs, some shaded areas, some unshaded areas. There's also a barbecue area located here and an outdoor fireplace. Our two courtyards located on the east and western side of the project include zen spaces, again, further outdoor barbecue area, Santa Maria barbecues, string lights. This, we tried to match this amenity package, you know, close to the architect, to the farmhouse-style architecture, trying to make it, you know, the, you know, using the landscape and the amenity package to stylistically coordinate with the, with the farmhouse-style architecture. We've included an additional zen space on this project with that water feature. We have that outdoor chessboard that we've shown previously on some of our other communities, some hammock chairs, and again, some additional lounge spaces, you know, to be consistent, providing many different potential gathering spaces for multiple different types of families. We also have that pet run, which includes that, you know, the trash receptacle and other small amenities for the pets at the entrance of the project. This is a rendering of the entry gate, consistent with the farmhouse-style architecture, so it has that, those same finishes which we'll go for, which will, I'll present shortly. Again, there's 411 parking spaces here. Only 314 spaces are required per the state density bonus law. Again, maximizing the parking with the tandem parking spaces, actually installing the EV chargers well above their code requirement at one EV charger per unit. 50% of the parking spaces are covered, and this is a professionally managed community that will enforce the parking rules. I'll kind of skip through this, but is that all of our entry gates, whether it's on the multifamily or the single family, are consistent, you know, being 45 feet from the back of walk above the code requirement to minimize traffic jams. The landscape design, so there are 94 parking lot trees provided. Only 69 parking lot trees are required. So again, going above what the code requires. Again, stylistically coordinated landscaping, consistent with native plants that are native and trees that are native to Santa Maria. And again, these are, this is drought-tolerant landscaping using drip irrigation and such to minimize our water usage. This is a rendering of our, of one of our elevations of the modern farmhouse-style architecture. You'll see shortly, there is about four or five different materials and colors that you'll see on the next slide. So we have a board and baton siding, two different stucco colors, Coronado stone cladding, and a brick wall accent. And to the left side of the screen, you'll see some zoomed-up versions of what those actually look like. There's four different materials with five different colors. There's standing seam roof metal for this specific project. So just to refresh, on our first multifamily project, we had the Spanish-style S tile roofing. On Lot 2, we had the asphalt shingle roof, and for this one, we're presenting the standing seam roof, metal roof. So trying to, you know, stay consistent with the specific plan, providing different types of architectural styles. There are wood painted rafters and beams, iron and wire mesh balcony features, balcony stucco and brick wall features, decorative lighting, window awnings, and again, black-framed windows and doors. This is that view from Stoll Road and Western Avenue, again, kind of very similar of what it would look like. Again, some landscaping on the, on the opposite side of our property line along Stoll and Western Avenue. The incentives we're requesting are primarily the same as we've been requesting since Lot 7, so again, additional height. As Carol mentioned, the farmhouse-style architecture requires a bit of a steeper roof, so the average height here is a little bit different. That average height would go up if we added back the third story at the end of those courtyards. So when we removed it, that average height kind of went down, but the highest points of our roof being at 40, 45 feet in lieu of Lot 2, which was 43 and 1/2 feet. This is the density bonus parking law, so just again, 314 spaces only required. We're providing 411, which is 97 spaces beyond the required parking. This is a breakdown between standard tandem and accessible parking spaces. Again, 50% of these parking spaces would be covered with solar carports. And the final density bonus waiver is a reduction in the 20% landscaping requirement. It's a four and, a four-and-a-half percent reduction in the required landscaping requirement. The open space is again about 300 square feet in lieu of the 250 square feet per unit that's required. And I'll just mention, which we mentioned in our study session, that some of the pet areas and some of those round areas that are in white on the screen are, you know, we're using either turf or DG, which can't be counted, towards your landscaping requirement. And those are just more drought tolerant and better for maintenance in terms of the foot traffic that would happen on top of those areas, and stay consistent and say, and stay green and actually plant well. And if we added those areas, we'd be above the 20% requirement. So we're above the, we're well beyond the open space requirement, and we're just, you know, using drought-tolerant landscape to achieve a better managed community. And again, this is just some of the changes from our original project on Lot 3. So initially, there was 248 units. The revised project is 242. The required parking being 314, we're providing 411. The same building design changes that we saw on Lot 2. The building at the end of those courtyards lowered to two stories, adding an additional pedestrian access point, children's study room, being consistent with the five-foot sidewalks, and having 94 parking lot trees in lieu of the 69 that are required per code. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Question? No questions. Go ahead, Commissioner Dickerson.
I don't know if I should, if I should be bringing this in. Ultimately, I'll, it's more of a question for the commissioners, but I do want the input from the, from the applicant as well. The request that I had for bringing the, the end of the courtyards down from three to two, that really wasn't conceptually what I had in mind. I wanted that opened up before the field, but as it was rendered and as the applicant put it out there architecturally and just dropped, you know, the top floor off, I actually think that it looks better in its original format with the three stories, with the peak and all the other nonsense with that. So I wanted your opinion on that, and if that's a general consensus, then I will, I was going to see if the applicant is amenable to just rolling it back to the original, to the original that we had of the three stories with the peak. And so I kind of wanted your opinions before I asked them that.
Do we want to wait till we bring this back for this kind of questions, or we should have this discussion now? Need some input?
I mean, I could just speak on behalf of the applicant, I guess, that, you know, you guys can discuss it. I mean, from us, it's important that we, you know, listen to your comments and that we try to meet you guys somewhere halfway in trying to redesign this project, so that's why it was done. The original project is obviously what we prefer, so we wouldn't have an objection to it as long as, you know, we wouldn't have to continue this hearing. I think that for us, it's just important to obtain the approval and not push the approval off. So if there's a way, I'm not sure, from the city standpoint, to condition the project to go back to that original design, we'd be amenable to that, absolutely.
Staff would need to roll it back five, 10, 50 years, something like that? No? Okay. All right. So they're amenable to it, and we can discuss it at the time, or whenever.
Yes, as far as I had looked at it, I think the original design was nice. I know we had some issues with some stairwells, the way they ended up, and we tried to modify that to look better. The original plan was fine with me. I know we did some shade studies, and I think that this, you know, we did the shade studies with the modified version. So I don't know if that's going to play a role in this.
I'm not too terribly worried about that.
Because I think the shade studies came pretty well. I was pretty impressed with those. So myself, I, I like either one. I believe that the first project, the first renderings probably looked a little bit better than what we have now. That would be my opinion. Commissioner Blanca?
Another might just come, I, yeah, and as you're taking a look at the pictures, I mean, the, the lines just are not broken up the way they are with the new modified versions. It's just a better-looking building, so.
It, it, yes, it, it's not a, the modification isn't as, it didn't open it up the way I thought it would either.
Yeah.
And just to chime in, we would be completely open to keeping the changes we made on the railing and some of those other changes while still adding that third story back. So we would keep some of those changes that we discussed. So it wouldn't be exactly as that first plan, but it would, we'd keep that railing change, but still add that third story.
The railing change that you had throughout that, the courtyard.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Any comments?
Yeah, I'll just add, I think I'm on the same page with Commissioner Dickerson to some degree. I think after kind of going through the, the design revisions and looking at the renderings and really trying to see that it achieved what we were thinking, you know, it would achieve, and it's, it's really not. And I think maybe it's, you know, makes some sense to maybe revert back to the design that we had. I think it's, at this point, maybe a win-win anyways. I don't think we were able to get what we thought we might get with this revision, so I, I tend to agree. I think I had similar thoughts recently about that after looking at the revised renderings and just the way things didn't quite look the way we thought they might look. I think maybe reverting back to the original does make sense.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I agree. I think that, you know, the initial concern was the shade, like, factor. But for me, that wasn't too detrimental, understanding that we did see the revision now compared to the, the initial one. I still have always liked the initial one. And then as to the railings, I mean, I would appreciate if we could keep that in.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, not a problem. I think it looks nicer as well, so we appreciate your comment.
Right.
And that was the only questions I had.
Commissioners, questions?
Chair Seifert?
Yes.
This is Dana Edie, Planning Manager. I just have one thing to add about the conditions. So if your commission wants to go back to the original design, we do have three conditions on each permit that we have already worked out that would need to be amended. And Carol can walk through each of those conditions and what would, what would change when you're ready. I know we still have to do public comment as well, but we've got that worked out.
Would you like to tell us about that right now?
Thank you. So the conditions are the same throughout both permits. The revision to revert back to the prior plan set that was reviewed by city staff, and for Lot 2, it was presented at the study session. The project description would consist of the plan set entitled Blossom Ranch Lot 2, consisting of 64 pages dated June 30th, 2023, and August 10th, sorry, excuse me, sorry, May 25th, 2023 for Lot 2. And that was, yeah, for Blossom Ranch, consisting of 64 pages, and incorporating the vertical black-colored picket railings and the reduction in the wall siding as well. That's condition one. And that's for PD 2023-0006. And then on the, the next two conditions are condition number two regarding the density bonus agreement. So the applicant did remove several units to incorporate those openings and the reducing to this, to just two floors rather than three. So there was a loss of several units. The applicant reduced their density bonus request from 8% units provided, affordable, low, low-income, very low-income residential. They were previously qualified for a 27.5% density bonus, and they were, the original project proposed 285 units. So all those numbers would change accordingly as depicted in the plan set from May. And then third and final would be condition number five regarding the parking area. The required parking spaces would go up in accordance with the units that were added. The parking spaces provided are the same. So it would go from 364 units required to 368 units required, or spaces required, parking spaces required. So that's for Lot 2. And then for Lot 3, the changes would be similar. The date of the plan set would be two dates because of a change in the architectural colors and materials to keep the colors consistent with what's for your commission. So that would reference on, for condition number one, for PD 2023-0011, they would reference plan set for plant, Blossom Ranch Multifamily Lot 3, June 30th, 2023, plan set dated June 30th, 2023, and August 10th, 2023 for Lot 3. So that's condition number one. And then similarly, the density bonus agreement, condition number two, would be a similar increase to a 27.5% density bonus with 8% of the units allowed under the base density, a density bonus of 53 units rather than 49, and 246 units being built over the 242, which were from the prior. So 246 would be approved units. And then finally, condition number five on PD 2023-11 is 318 parking spaces are required rather than 314, and the parking spaces are the same that are provided. It's 411.
Carol, sorry, what were the number of units on Lot 2? The total revised?
So the total of units proposed?
Now, yeah.
Now, 285.
That was excellent, Carol, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions for the applicant? I've got just a few. The pedestrian accesses, how do they access those? Do they have a key card or something?
It's, it's a key fob, so the entire community is run under an access control, and essentially the residents would receive a key fob. It's an electrical key fob that they can swipe, a little card reader that's located at the entrances. And at the main entrance, there's a call, there's a call box if a resident is coming to visit or if there's a vendor there.
Does that work for kids?
Yeah, I mean, generally, if the kids are walking, they can, they can, first of all, they can, the kids can receive their own key fob if the parents want, and, you know, if the kids are going to school, generally, it's a parent taking the kid to school and so forth. So, yeah. And the key fobs are located at an ADA height per state code, so it's fairly low along the wall.
I wondered how that would work. What, what, I know this, I have old, community chalkboard?
Yes, it's a community chalkboard for kids to play tic-tac-toe or, and so forth, instead of them using, you know, the chalk on our, some of our walkways that you'll see, or they'll, they'll use the chalkboard. Some families, if they're having a gathering, a barbecue gathering, they can use the chalkboard to play family games. It's just an additional amenity.
Do you have these in any of your existing?
Smaller versions of them, but yeah, they work really well in some of our other communities.
Very good. Are you okay with the changes that Carol had just?
Yes.
Very good. That's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
What about, do we not Zoom yet? We're going to open up to the public. So do we go to Zoom first?
If you're on Zoom and would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. It does look like we have one hand raised, so Kathleen, you can unmute them. Mr. Cassidy, you are allowed to speak. Yes?
I've been working for this program for about three years. I'm a student and a lecturer, and I just want to contribute some research and support to the block and the community. As a student, having four or five houses can be very challenging, and I know that many of you are in very much trouble. I believe that this development is an opportunity to foster more inclusive and welcoming communities. I would like to see a town area where students like me, working professionals, and families in private homes, helping communities in crisis, but everyone has a choice to buy or build a new home. I also think it's a great opportunity to remain, to remain with our dad's family for our children. I think the whole residential challenge, I think, is to try and house the community in a way that allows us to, thank you.
I don't know about anyone else who had a really hard time hearing that?
She was in support.
Okay, okay, support. Okay. Yeah, because that's, I didn't even get that part.
Yeah, she was in support of the project. She was discussing how there's a need for housing and, housing that's affordable to students. That was her, her general comments. We need to, we'll continue to work on some of the audio.
I came in when the guys were here doing all their wiring and all their stuff, like, don't spill any water on that table. So, yeah, I'm sure that they can do something with that audio for the Zoom. It probably was just overlooked. Yeah, we're definitely going to have to work on that. Thank you.
She, she may have also just not been close to her own mic. It may have been on her end.
I don't know. It wasn't, it didn't come through on any of our speakers, so maybe, maybe they can make that modification. I don't have any speaker slips, and I don't see anyone in the audience that wants to speak. Public comment, we don't need any rebuttals. Do we have any more questions from the commission? Okay, we do not. This public hearing is closed, and we're bringing it back to the commission for a discussion and a decision on this item. Would like to start?
I'll go ahead and start. Yeah, the, the applicant has produced a, a nice looking facility. It's got a lot of amenities, as they point out, and they have tried to work with us on, on various things. Some, some hashed out and some didn't. And overall, I would be supportive of this, this project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mahajer?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I agree, and I, I really commend the applicant for meeting us halfway on a lot of our requests. That's huge, and I think for me, with this project, the most important thing was to maximize the housing units, and I think reverting back to that initial plan was a really great option to do that. So I'm in support of that as well.
Commissioner Blanco?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think, you know, this design has evolved a little bit. I, I do appreciate the applicant kind of taking our comments into consideration and, you know, willing to kind of make the revisions that we thought could work well. You know, fortunately, unfortunately or fortunately, we're able to kind of revert back. I think maybe it's a win-win situation anyway, so, yeah, I do appreciate the, the thoughtfulness into a lot of the design. I think as we've looked at it longer, I think I realized there's a lot of good work that's gone into it, a lot of good design work. I do like the amenities. I think that's going to be a huge benefit to the community. Certainly, you know, addressing the parking is huge. I think we talked about that early on, so, and, and then having it be kind of a, a green community with, with EV charging, which is the future, I think that's very forward-thinking of the applicant. So I got a lot of, got a, a lot of good vibes in going through the whole process. I do appreciate the, the patience with our comments and our feedback, and I think I always, I've always said it, I think the more we review things, even though things get delayed a little bit, I think in the end, we, we tend to make the best decision that we can with, with a little bit more time. So, thank you very much. I, I do think that the project looks, looks really good. Thank you.
Commissioner, I agree with the other commissioners, and I, and I do want to thank you for going through the study session program with us. I think it's super important. I think it's helped you, it's helped us understand the project. You guys have came back every, after every study session and incorporated any ideas or tried to do anything that we've asked. You've gone over and above on your amenities for this project. I think it's going to be a nice place to live for our community. I, I like the way that you've added the landscaping and the trees, extra trees, extra landscaping, extra parking, solar energy, EV charging. You threw in just about everything you could think of, and I, and in this day and age, that's, that's where you are, so thank you very much for that. As you know, we have a huge parking problem with the state requirements being met on other projects, so the fact that you're willing to give us those extra parking spaces, I think it's going to make for a much nicer community. It's been, it's been good working with you guys. I'm looking forward to seeing this project go, and, and I can support this project myself, so I think that takes us to a, a motion. Do I, do I hear a motion? I think Commissioner Lopez. Okay, there we go. Commissioner Mahajer?
Yes, thank you, Chair. By motion, I move to approve Plan Development Permit PD 2023 zero zero six and Plan Development Permit PD 2023 zero zero one. But first, we'll approve PD 2023 zero zero six.
With the modifications as indicated?
With the modifications as indicated.
Let's get work.
Yeah, Commissioners, we actually have a recommendation up on the screen there for each one, and we amended it so that it includes not only the staff memorandum revisions, but also the revisions that we made this evening.
Okay, we're going to try it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I move to approve Plan Development Permit PD 2023 zero zero six as referenced in the staff memorandum dated October seventeenth, 2023, and as revised at today's hearing, October eighteenth, 2023.
We do both at once? One at a time. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Commissioner Mahajer?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Chair Seifert?
Aye. Can we have the second motion, please?
By motion, I approve our Plan Development Permit PD 2023 zero zero one one as referenced in the staff memorandum dated October seventeenth, 2023, and as revised at today's hearing, October eighteenth, 2023.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, or may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Mahajer?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Chair Seifert?
Aye. Your project has passed. Thank you for all the modifications. Thanks for working with us, and I bet you didn't expect to get a couple extra units this evening, so I'm sure that's going to help.
Yeah, four units.
Yes, so thank you very much. Whenever you try to, whenever you try to do it.
To that right away.
I couldn't do that.
Yeah, yeah, I was like, what?
Good night, Chairman. Well, we're back to normal, with two people in the audience. So at this time, I marked up my whole thing, we got other business oral reports from planning commission and staff. Do we have any oral reports from staff?
Yes, thank you. So we have a study session tomorrow at one thirty, and the study session is going to be in our planning and development, or, sorry, community development conference room at one ten South Pine Street at one thirty PM. Normally, we have them in Shepherd Hall, but Shepherd Hall is just not available tomorrow, so we'll do it at the Community Development Department. And the other thing I wanted to update your commission on is about our housing element. We last week just submitted our, we posted our third draft of the housing element for public review. The process is that whenever you receive comments back from the state, you make those changes and then you post the draft again for seven days from public review before sending it back to the state. So the end of that seven days was yesterday, and so we're planning on providing our third draft to our state reviewer, I believe, tomorrow. And then we're expecting to receive a letter from them indicating that we can move forward to planning commission and city council hearings. So right now, we've got it scheduled tentatively, because we need to get the letter first, but for November fifteenth for planning commission and then early December for city council. So that is moving along well, and we don't need to do any rezoning. We had enough sites, available sites, so once it's adopted, then we can send it back to the state for certification and we're, we're pretty much done. So that's the update for tonight. Thank you.
Very good, Dana. Thank you for that. And Carol, I just want to commend you on your work tonight. We were all very impressed that you were able to pull that off. Thank you very much. Nicely done. At that, we have no gavel, but we are adjourned. Oh, wait a minute. No. The Commissioners have anything?
I'll save it.
We are adjourned.